Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 25th, 2019. I want to call this meeting to order and thank the Garden Club for providing the arrangement. Can you take roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O’Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. May I ask Mr. Russell Steinsley is in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments. Any speaker cards?
Yes. Marsha Glassner, followed by Craig.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Marsha Glassner. I want to speak briefly about the Mills Park project. As you drive along ECR, you see more and more projects like this. Most look fine from the streets, but if you go around to the side or the back, some are really awful. If this project is built, San Bruno residents and visitors will be looking at the entire project from all sides for a very long time. The developer has shown us a couple of street views, but the rest has been top-down architectural-type drawings which provide only limited information about what the project will look like from the street. City Council and San Bruno residents deserve to see what this project will look like from the outside, from street to elevator top, on all eight sides. What will we see on Angus, on Canes, on White Way? I hope the Council will agree with me that this information is essential to that decision. Of particular concern to me personally is what will be along White Way. Drawings show landscaped space in portions of this area, but it’s my understanding this will be separated from White Way by a wall. If White Way will remain an alley with a wall added on the eastern side in addition to the existing walls on the western side, it seems very likely that crime there will increase. I would like to know what will be done to prevent that from happening. At last week’s planning commission meeting, the developer showed us a shadow study. It showed shadows reaching almost to houses at 9:00 AM in the winter. They implied that this would be the most severe impact. However, in the winter, the sun rises more than an hour and a half earlier than that. And it rises more than three and a half hours earlier than that in the summer. So to get an honest estimate of the amount of sunlight homes and yards will lose, a new shadow study is needed that shows the shadows as they will be cast at sunrise and possibly hourly afterwards if the developer wants to show how long that impact will last. I hope City Council agrees that a study that more accurately reflects how nearby properties will be shadowed by this project if it’s built is needed before the project can be approved. And then finally, Google just announced $1 billion for housing. Will San Bruno receive any of that largess and how will it affect our need for this unpopular project? Thank you very much.
You’re welcome. Thank you for your comments.
Craig, followed by John.
Good evening. I’d also like to speak about the Mills Park project. I was shocked when I was at the planning meeting last week, week ago? Yeah. How many people had not heard anything about this project happening up until the last week or so because they were outside of that 600-foot footprint for informing the public? To me, this indicates a big problem overall with this project in that the minimums are being met, but that doesn’t mean they’re right. It’s easier to change something before than after. It’s always easier to change something before than after. Once built, there’s going to be no changing anything. There was a lot of sympathy from the Planning Commission, at least as expressed from the table, until the city lawyer informed them that if they turned it down, it would have to start from the beginning. What’s wrong with that? What’s wrong with that if what is built does not have a horrible impact in multiple neighborhoods in the city? Major impact to people that didn’t even know this was happening before that planning commission meeting and a lot of us went door-to-door in some cases trying to inform people of what was going on. I support development. I support housing. I support affordable housing, although the definition of that is kind of insane around here. But I don’t support what’s being proposed, and I hope you will all reconsider it with the idea that something better can be done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Berlir, followed by Russell Steins.
Hi, I’m John Berlir. If you had a volunteer at the center that worked for you for 30 years and she earned only $20,000 a year, there’ll be $600,000 worth of labor that person has given you, and I’d know you’d move heaven and earth to somehow make that right. It says her right here at the top of your agenda. It says “The City With A Heart.” I lived here for many years, and I know that’s not just baloney, sliced. It’s a wonderful city. And I know that you would seek out monies, you would shake the trees to find out money if there’s any waste. For instance, you might go to your salaries. I did ask for all the salaries, including overtime. I’m not sure the list that I got was complete. I would go to the bingo games that are played here in San Bruno at this center and find out where the money is. Is there some accountability? Does somebody trace the money? Who carries the money from here to the safe? I would go to donations. What was donated specifically to the Senior Citizen Center in the form of money, in the form of real estate, in the form of vehicles? When is that going to be forthcoming? If it were only two buildings in San Bruno that were donated to the Senior Citizen Center, that’s $2 million. Therefore, if there’s any waste, it should be, or money unaccounted for, it should be in your budget somewhere. Where is it? I added a fourth one. When a fire truck goes shopping with three men, how much does that represent? Not just one trip, but over a period of a year? Please be a city with a heart. This lady spent a lot of time here and a lot of effort. I think she deserves something more than a pat on the head or a luncheon. Thank you.
Russell Steins.
Good evening, Council. You guys are going to have a very big decision soon, which is, you know, the Mills Park Plaza. The TCP calls for a 1,600-unit build-out. With almost 200 almost being built or in planning to be built, it leaves us with about 1,400. This development is about one-third of that in a two-block radius of Mills Park. They’re looking at putting that one-third of the entire transit corridor in a two-block radius of Mills Park. First, I want you to know, while I believe all of us are for conscious building that fits into our community, we believe that the developer did not hear us in the three outreach meetings that they held. The number-one complaint that was made by the residents was the building was way too much for the residential community that it was up against, and I believe it fell on deaf ears. While our city is being kind, working with this developer on their impact fees, they will come before you very shortly and tell you that they made a very pleasing, architectural-pleasing building, and they could have stuffed more apartments in it, but the truth is, it probably would have never passed the Architecture Review Committee if they had tried to do that. They will also tell you that they put plenty of parking and that they will exclude themselves from a non-existing parking permit program. The developer is trying to hit a grand slam here with no consciousness for the residents of Mills Park. I will make every effort to inform this community of your vote. Also, the Planning Commission, the commissioners did make a motion that the developer lowered this building to four stories. All the commissioners agreed. I believe that if our community development director would not have pushed them so hard, they would have been voted down 3 to 2 by our planning commission. In closing, the union filed the complaint on CEQA and then dropped it after the developer agreed to use union labor. I have put a public request into the document with our city attorney, and I hope that this developer and the Williams family will consider those who reside here in Mills Park. And most important, that you, the People’s Council, protect Mills community. Because as we already know, this same developer sold the amateur building, made millions of dollars, and walked away from it, leaving the city in not a very good position. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speaker cards? Okay. We will move on to announcements and presentations. First item, for future planning, the city has embarked on fiscal sustainability effort to ensure that we are continuing to address your priorities, be a part of the process, and tell us what you think. A survey is available on the city’s website, www.sanbruno.ca.gov. Enhancing Your San Bruno. Item B, we’re going to receive a presentation from our fire and police chiefs regarding the city’s requirements for use of safe and sane fireworks and the City of San Bruno’s zero tolerance policy. Chief?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Medina and Councilmembers. Dave Cresta, Fire Chief, and I’ll be joined shortly by Ed Barberini, the Police Chief, and we’re going to review the city’s requirements for the use and sale of safe and sane fireworks and talk about the city’s zero tolerance policy for illegal fireworks. So just to recap on some of the stuff that we’ve done and are ongoing up until the holiday, on June 6th, police and fire staff conducted the Fire Safety Seminar to the community members, representatives of the operating fireworks booths. Staff is in the process of distributing informational warning notices to all city facilities and public and private schools. Here’s an example of those. We have those available also at the fire station. There are some bigger ones as well. They’ll be posted in those various locations, and some of our business partners in the community have asked for them as well. Cable television is running PSAs all month about the use of safe and sane fireworks and the penalties for the use of illegal fireworks. And on this Friday, the 28th, all the fireworks booths will be inspected by the fire marshal. There’ll be subsequent inspections by staff through the holiday. Just briefly talking about the use of safe and sane fireworks, they can begin being purchased and used on June 28th from noon until 9:00 PM and on the 4th from noon until 11:00 PM. Safe and sane fireworks are only allowed on private property and have to be used within 10 feet away from a residence, building, or any structures. Fireworks are not allowed on public property such as streets, parks, schools, or private open space areas such as parking lots and vacant lots without the consent of the owner. We want to remind everyone to use safe and sane fireworks responsibly, which includes using them on a flat surface away from any grass or debris. An adult should be present in the company of children, and we ask that a bucket of water, used fireworks be disposed in a bucket of water, and hoses is readily available to prevent any fires after the fireworks are used. So I’ll turn it over to the Police Chief, and he’s going to talk about zero tolerance policy.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. As in years past, officers from San Bruno Police Department will be strictly enforcing the prohibited use of illegal fireworks this year and the improper use of safe and sane fireworks as well in the days prior to, on the holiday itself, and throughout the holiday weekend. Police staffing levels have been increased to accommodate these enforcement efforts, and on the 4th itself, all days off have been canceled. I’d like to acknowledge and thank all of our staff for the sacrifice they make every year, spending this holiday away from their families, even if it’s their scheduled day off. Officers will be deployed in marked and unmarked vehicles, on bicycles, and on foot. Chief Cresta went through when and where fireworks can be used. The penalty for not adhering to the municipal code is either an arrest or a $1,000 fine. Typically, it includes an administrative citation that accompanies a $1,000 fine. As I mentioned, the Police Department will have non-uniform personnel deployed looking for violations. While an individual may not be caught in the act or by a uniformed officer, he or she may be cited after the fact if observed to be committing a violation by an officer in the field. This may include receiving a citation on the dates following the 4th of July if officers were unable to issue it on the 4th itself. Video will be used when possible to document these violations. This strategy will also be employed to enforce Municipal Code Section 6.51.030. It’s basically our version of the social host ordinance, which applies to anyone that allows, causes, maintains, or permits a violation to exist or continue by an act or omission. So if you have a residence that you’re allowing to be used as a center for fireworks or illegal fireworks to be lit off, and we have evidence of that, you can expect to receive a citation either that night or after the fact. Throughout this week, officers will be contacting residents in areas where the use of illegal fireworks have been frequently used in past years. We’ll review with these residents the existing statutes and alert them to our dedicated enforcement efforts. Public notices will also, or either have been, or will also be distributed via San Bruno Cable and our social media outlets. The Police Department wishes everyone a happy and safe Independence Day and urges all residents and visitors to our city to abide by the rules pertaining to fireworks while celebrating the holiday. As far as reporting the use of fireworks, as you can imagine, we get a large number of calls for service on the 4th of July itself. We do our best to answer each and every call for service. That’s always been our policy, and we’ll continue to do that. But please know that we are out there in a proactive and lean-in and have a proactive stance regarding the use of fireworks. And the fact of the matter is that of the 22 administrative citations we issued last year, all of those were due to the proactive effort that our officers took in looking for violations. It’s very difficult for us to respond to a call for service regarding fireworks and actually catch somebody in the act or in possession. It’s kind of chasing your tail around. So we do get frustration on both sides of the issue, and we receive a lot of criticism on both sides of the issue. There’s people that vehemently oppose the use of any type of fireworks, and then we get folks who say, hey, it’s just one day a year. Cut us a little bit of a break. And they’re both pretty passionate about what they feel. So when calling 911, please reserve the 911 lines for emergency. We encourage all residents to only call 911 in the case of an emergency, which on any holiday, there’s a potential for because people are gathering together in large groups. But if you’re calling for a non-emergency call, we encourage you to use that number, which is 616-7100. That concludes my little informative presentation here, and I’d be happy to answer any questions along with the Chief if you have any.
Any questions from Council for the Chiefs? Laura?
Yes, just one question. So I appreciate that comment about not calling 911 for an emergency, but I know that there are a lot of residents who’ll say, oh, there’s illegals going off over here, there’s illegals going off over here, and they maybe want a way to be able to say, hey, have you checked that corridor? Have you checked that street? Is there a way that residents can kind of get that feedback without calling 911?
Sure. Our 911 systems are kind of our lifeline. We don’t want to overload those. And seeing illegal fireworks going off, and I know that people feel passionately about fireworks on both sides, is not what we would call a priority-one or emergency call. Obviously, if there’s a fire or something like that, that’s a different story. However, what we try to remind people of is sometimes people get frustrated because they see patrol cars driving by. Well, in addition to the proactive units that we have out in the field, we’re also responding to assaults, domestic violence. All of the calls we get on a nightly basis occur on 4th of July, if not even at a greater rate, because we seem to have some more people in the city that evening. So I would encourage folks who are wishing to report those types of things to use the business line, which again is 616-7100. And we do use calls for service to kind of gauge where the greatest activity is, but we’re out in force that night, and we kind of have a pretty good idea of where the concentrated areas are, and that’s where we focus a lot of our efforts. So I always call the police if you’re reporting any type of emergency, but just know that as bad as the fireworks are and sound, there are higher priority calls that we’re responding to as well that evening. Not that it’s not a priority, but you know, it’s safety first, property second, and disturbances and inconveniences third, and that’s the way we approach it.
Thank you very much.
Marty?
I wanted to stress to the public about how difficult it really is to catch somebody. And if I heard properly, Chief Barberini, that of the 22 citations, that how many of those were actually the officer catching the lighting of the fireworks? Was there?
Well, all 22 citations that were issued last year were as a result of self-initiated activity by the officer themselves and not as a result of a call of somebody complaining. So we know where the problem areas are. We have officers deployed in those areas. I mean, even when we do, we have to figure out a way to, I mean, there’s a whole due process component to this. We just can’t blanket the city with $1,000 fines. We, you know, we respect people’s rights, and if we’re accusing you of some wrongdoing, we have to be able to substantiate that or prove that. So unless we catch you in the possession of these types of materials or we catch you in the act of lighting them off, it’s a little difficult for us. And people get frustrated because we’re always turning the corner at the wrong time. You know, we get there 30 seconds after it went off, and we get those types of calls all the time, and I understand the frustration. But on the other side of the spectrum, we get some pretty passionate folks who believe that we should not be spending our resources in this area too. So there are strong beliefs on both sides of that issue.
Great. Thank you. And my question for Chief Cresta would be, what could people, residents, do about protecting their property, making sure like leaves are off their roof gutters, and just the idea of making your home a little safer during these fireworks?
Yeah, it’s certainly always smart to check your roof, check surrounding area. You don’t want combustibles stacked up against your house, rake leaves in the area. When you’re using fireworks, obviously, it’s really key to have that supervision, flat area, away from all that rubbish, and then, like I said, have a hose handy. And every year, we usually get one or two fires, people just discarding the fireworks, safe and sane fireworks in their toter, and then three or four hours later, in the middle of the night, it catches fire. Usually, it’s just near a fence, but sometimes we’ve had subsequent fires if they’re against the house, and those fires aren’t detected for hours, and pretty soon it could be a major problem. So just level-headed thinking, awareness around the use of safe and sane fireworks.
Thank you.
And just for myself, just as a reminder, I was reading a few posts. One is that why is the City of San Bruno still selling, and we’re the only one in the county? City of Pacifica currently does as well by a voter initiative. City of San Bruno, back in 2005, the voters approved, I think it was about 63%, or somewhere around there, for safe and sane fireworks to continue. There was also other posts about that the reason the City of San Bruno is doing it is because of all the money that we’re making. And staff, director, and manager can correct me, but aside from the city recouping its costs for the extra patrol, the public works, the parks, the cleanup, the City of San Bruno itself does not make money off the sale of safe and sane fireworks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And it was just because, obviously, the threads start, and I wanted that to be clear. Keeping in mind, when the measure was approved, it was for 18 groups. This year, we have 14. So that has gone down, whether that’s a sign of things to come, of other groups not wishing or choosing, or the cost-effectiveness for the work that they have to do. But this year, if I’m not mistaken, Madam Clerk, it is 14 groups, and there are 18 slots available.
That’s correct.
Thank you. And those groups are also reviewed as far as, if you, Madam Clerk, if you could just say to someone, what are the criteria for a group being allowed to sell safe and sane fireworks?
The Council has a subcommittee consisting of Vice Mayor O’Connell and Councilmember Salazar, who reviews all of the applications. The applications that come through are from nonprofit agencies local to San Bruno or has some connection to San Bruno, so that we’re not getting agencies from, say, Southern California coming up to purchase, rent a booth because they want to make some money. And it is typical that the booths themselves don’t actually make too much money, even the nonprofits that come in. They do it just for whatever they can get out of it.
Irene?
I just wanted to add, most of the booths are actually run by organizations that benefit students or youth groups. We have the baseball, football, soccer.
Boys and girls clubs.
Boy Scouts. Those kinds of, American Legion is in there, the Police Association.
Lions Club.
Lions Rotary, and they all benefit something in San Bruno. So none of the money, I shouldn’t say none of the money, but a majority of the money stays in San Bruno and benefits the residents of San Bruno somehow or another. So that was another piece of the criteria.
Anything else from Council? If not, both Chiefs, thank you. Next on the agenda, item C, we’re going to receive the annual oral report from the San Bruno Community Foundation. Leslie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I’m Leslie Hadamia, and I have been the Executive Director of the San Bruno Community Foundation for the past four and a half years. And with me this evening is our Vice President, Emily Roberts. I really appreciate this opportunity every year to come before you to give a recap of our past year’s activities. Once again, we have been very busy administering a broad array of programs that benefit the San Bruno community, utilizing the restitution funds resulting from the tragic 2010 gas pipeline explosion. I’d like to start by highlighting the two programs that the foundation itself runs. The first is our Crestmore Neighborhood Memorial Scholarship, which we launched in 2016 to honor the community members who most directly endured the 2010 tragedy. This scholarship assists San Bruno students who have demonstrated a deep commitment to the San Bruno community. Earlier this month, we awarded our fourth set of college scholarships totaling $120,000 to nine impressive high school and community college graduates. Thank you to those Councilmembers who were able to attend our scholarship reception and presentation, and especially to Mayor Medina for personally addressing the scholars at our awards ceremony. I hope you’ve had a chance to look at their bios. They’re on our website, because these impressive young people really give us great hope for our future and our community. Our second program is our Community Grants Fund. We also created that in 2016, and this program allows local community groups to apply for funding of up to $25,000 for programs that benefit the San Bruno community. At the end of 2018, we awarded our third set of community grants, which totaled $300,000, thanks in part to a generous $100,000 donation from YouTube and Google.org. The 25 grants went to, you can barely read it, I know it’s a lot, went to a diverse set of community groups, as you can see from the slide, from My Digital Tattoo to the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County, to the Lowen Soccer Club, to the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. The city received two community grants, one for the Narita Sister City Exchange Program and another to support essential emergency management training for the city’s senior leadership team. We will launch our fourth community grant cycle next week with an application deadline of September 25th. We just received the check, and I’m happy to announce that YouTube and Google.org will again be contributing $100,000 to this program. And so with the $200,000 that the foundation will be putting into it, we’ll be able to award another $300,000 in community grants at the end of the year. In total, over the three years, Google has contributed a combined total of $300,000 to this program, and we appreciate the fact that they’ve been able for us to increase our giving in this area by 50%. We’ve also been happy to support the local public schools with two different initiatives over the past couple of years. Two years ago, we launched the Music Education Strategic Initiative, which aims to make music education a hallmark of San Bruno’s public schools. We are providing nearly $1.5 million over three years to the San Bruno Education Foundation and the Cappuccino High School Alumni Association to benefit the music programs at all San Bruno Park School District schools and Cappuccino High School. We just completed the second year of the initiative, during which we funded the Music for Minors program at all five elementary schools and instrument and equipment purchases at Parkside and Cappuccino. We also enjoyed the initiative’s inaugural Music in the Air Community Concert that took place last November. The idea behind the initiative is to partially fund not just the programs, but to bolster the fundraising capabilities of both the Education Foundation and the CAP Alumni Association, so that these programs will be sustainable once foundation funding sunsets. The initiative has received numerous awards, both on the national and local fronts, and most recently, it received the Partners in Educational Excellence Award from the Association of California School Administrators, Region 5. Last summer, the foundation also approved a quarter-million-dollar grant to support the San Bruno Park School District’s transformation efforts. The funding covered the program implementation fees for the SEAL literacy program being implemented at Allen and Bel Air Elementary Schools, particularly to benefit the large population of English learners in grades K through 3 at those schools. The grant also allowed Parkside to utilize the expertise of the San Francisco nonprofit Partners in School Innovation to transform the school culture and provide better support for the teachers and leadership team at Parkside. Both of these programs support the district’s new vision for schools with tomorrow inside to accomplish- to accomplish educational and facilities transformation. Finally, we are excited about all of the projects we are doing in partnership with the city. As you know, we are proud to partner and support the city's plan to build a new Recreation and Aquatic Center in San Bruno Park, uh, with a commitment of fifty million dollars. We funded the conceptual design phase, which ended up being a four hundred and sixteen thousand dollar grant with final payment last November. We have signed two additional grant agreements with the city for this project, one in January for architectural services through the duration of the project for about five point four million dollars, and one in May for project and construction management services for just a little over a million dollars. These two grants are being paid on a quarterly schedule based on reporting from the city. The three grants together account for about six point nine million of the fifty million dollar total. We look forward to the conclusion of the schematic design process later this year and hearing from the city about the next steps in the project, including the city's business plan for operating this much-needed new resource for our community. For the past four years, the foundation has also been a proud sponsor of the city's Community Day in the Park, which we all enjoyed three weeks ago. As we have in the past, uh, the foundation assisted the city in bringing in additional sponsors for the event, which are listed on the slide. And we were thrilled to have the city staff also participate in this fundraising component and bring in, um, a number of new sponsors, um, supporting the event. We were also happy to see the conclusion of our partnership with the city and YouTube to bring pedestrian safety improvements to San Bruno this year. With a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars from YouTube and nearly a hundred thousand dollars from the foundation, flashing beacons now aid pedestrians at five unsignalized crosswalks, two near Parkside, one in front of Portola Elementary, one in front of John Muir Elementary, and a final set on the south end of San Mateo Avenue. In March twenty eighteen, the board approved a strategic grant totaling about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to the city for three projects aimed at enhancing the effectiveness of San Bruno's first responders. The three projects included police mindfulness training, emergency shelter supplies, and critical facility site assessments. We're, we are pleased that all three projects have been completed, and we are in the process of preparing the final grant payment for this project. As you know, after the April twenty eighteen shooting at YouTube's headquarters, Google dot org and employees of Google and YouTube contributed more than three hundred and three hundred, three hundred and three hundred thousand dollars to our first responder efforts. And just a few weeks ago, the foundation board approved a grant to cover the acquisition and construction of a mobile command vehicle for the city using these funds. We look forward to working with the city to execute the grant agreement once the city finalizes its plans for the mobile command vehicle. In accordance with our bylaws, the council's consent calendar this evening includes the foundation's fiscal year nineteen-twenty budget. Just a few words about our budget for you. The expenses include nearly one point one-four million dollars in direct program, program dispersments, including four hundred and seventy-five hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for two new rec center grants, one for temporary facilities and one for consultants to help develop the business and operational plan, and the balance for scholarships, community grants, and additional first responder grant and Community Day. In addition, the budget includes about four hundred thousand dollars in support costs. We do not show investment income on our investment, for our investment accounts on our budget. The board designates the payout or amount to transfer from our investment accounts to cover the year's cash flow needs. Thus, what the budget shows are the funds actually available for our operations. It shows that we are taking a one point nine percent payout from the quasi-endowment, or roughly three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which will cover, uh, the program dispersments for community grants and the scholarship, and the balance needed to cover our cash flow needs, about four point eight million dollars coming from the strategic pool, most of which will be covering, um, grants related to the recreation center. Our budget is, also does not reflect the totality of our investment holdings, but I'd like you to know that as of May thirty-first, our total assets exceeded seventy-four million dollars. Um, so we're above where we started from several years ago, and that's after paying out more than two million dollars in strategic grants and about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in community grants, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in Crestmore scholarships, and our operating expenses since inception. So the money has been well taken care of. We respectfully ask the city council to approve the foundation's fiscal year nineteen-twenty budget. This action will allow the foundation to continue moving forward on its current trajectory to use the restitution funds to enhance the quality of life for all of us in San Bruno. Before I close, I'd like to acknowledge by name the board members who have been key to the foundation's success, in addition to Vice President Roberts, who's here. We have President Frank Headley, Secretary John McLaughlin, Treasurer Tim Ross, and Board Members Pat Bohm, Nancy Kraus, and Dr. Regina Stan Backstrout. We will be sad to see three of our original board members, Frank Headley, Pat Bohm, and Patricia, and Regina Stan Backstrout, roll off the board after two terms at the end of this year. They have been instrumental in helping the foundation get to where it is today. As you may know, Dr. Stand Backstrout has submitted her resignation from our board six months early at the end of this month to coincide with her retirement from Skyline College. Earlier this week, we submitted to you our recommendations to assist you as you consider appointments to fill the open slots. We thank the council for the opportunity to participate in this process and for taking up this matter next month. And finally, I just want to thank, um, the city staff that have been so instrumental in our success as well. City Manager Jevon Grogren, City Attorney Mark Zaffarano, and all of the senior leadership team who provide the foundation with, um, counsel and advice and assistance on all of the different projects we do, and we greatly appreciate their assistance. Um, I hope you agree that the foundation has had another very productive, um, and busy year, um, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have about our activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Questions from council? Michael, please.
Just one comment. Leslie, just one, uh, thank you for being here and sharing this information tonight. I think it was actually kind of timely because recently we had some questions, uh, come to the council about, uh, how the, the, um, the money is being spent, is it being, uh, spent appropriately, and were we aware of how it's being spent? And so, uh, having you review the program, uh, all the programs that are being funded tonight is, is actually very timely, and appreciate the comments on the budget, which we'll be approving later. So thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Marty.
The, uh, first of all, thank you, uh, for your presentation and, uh, looking forward to many more things. Speaking of which, the next year grants, community grants, that will roll out at what time and their?
It will be, um, the application will be, be available next week, and the application deadline will be September twenty-fifth.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? No, uh, Leslie, thank you. Emily, thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I can tell you by one who was here with the scholarships, um, the stories of the young people, some that I just saw graduate from CAP, uh, a short time before that, on that Friday, uh, was some that came back that had received the scholarships. One lady in particular still is on my mind, which is a woman that came back, uh, with her son, who had always volunteered and had always given. And she's a young lady with a young child, uh, and unfortunately, she has struggled, and she was very clear and very honest at the mic that you're standing at right now, Leslie. Um, and unfortunately, um, her son lost, uh, his father within a year, year ago. And so, at such a young age, but what has sustained her was not only getting this start from the scholarship that allowed her to pursue her education, but that also, her volunteering and her encouraging those that were receiving the scholarships that day to further their education career. And the opportunities that it really brings, because it is so expensive right now, has been something that has been, I think, as one of the neighbors from the area that was affected on that night in two thousand and ten, said that this was a part of the continuation. It was that folks that suffered, the folks that we lost, the eight residents, did not in vain, that there was a part of them that went on forward, and it was going to go on forward as they helped and ensured the success, uh, in our future here in this community and wherever they may travel. So a lot of great things happened, a lot of great things happening. So thank you for, um, all your help and support, and please, uh, please tell the board of our thanks and appreciation.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to consent.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any items from council or action?
Moved approved.
Second. Motion made in a second to approve all items on consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I got five oh on voice. We'll move on to public hearing.
Item six A, hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving FY two thousand nineteen twenty operating and FY two thousand twenty through twenty-four capital improvement program budget, approving city appropriations GAN limit for FY two thousand nineteen twenty, and approving the city's master fee schedule for FY two thousand nineteen twenty.
Um, Mr. Finance Director, Mr. DiMartini.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the city's finance director, and it's my pleasure to present an overview of the city's operating and capital budget for the upcoming fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. The objective of the item before you this evening is to hold a public hearing and request that you adopt, uh, three resolutions. The first is to approve of the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating and the fiscal year twenty twenty-four capital improvement program, or the CIP budget, also requesting that you approve of the city appropriations, or GAN, limit for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and then also approve of the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year nineteen twenty as well. So the agenda for the presentation this evening is I'll first provide a, a brief overview of the city's general fund, um, operating budget, talk a little bit more about some of the reserves that we have in place and are projecting, an overview of the city's four enterprise funds and the internal service funds, a brief overview of the city's capital improvement program, vehicles and equipment purchases, the city's master fee schedule, the GAN limit. The staff report does articulate a few alternatives for you, uh, this evening, which I'll present. And then finally, the request to council on any questions that you might have this So first, just to provide a brief overview of where we've been so far to date. This process really does start at the beginning of the calendar year, um, with the city manager's budget instructions that he provides to the city's leadership team, um, with providing high-level strategic direction on developing the budget proposals, uh, in line with city council priority areas. We then held a study session with city council on reviewing and confirming your priorities. Uh, we held that back in February. There were multiple weeks of staff, uh, putting together and developing budget proposals. Um, and the first, uh, study session with council was held on May twenty-ninth, uh, of the city manager's recommended budget, where we held a retreat. We then came back for a second buddy, uh, study session, which was held on June eleventh, and here we are this evening requesting, uh, your approval. It's also important to note that our budget has already publicly been made available. It's on the city's website on a dedicated page, and, uh, the, the prior study sessions were recorded and they're made available on YouTube, um, and are featured on Cable Channel One. So the information is, has been available to the public at the time that it was recorded. So in response to Councilmember O'Connell's request at the June eleventh study session, I was able to gather the city of San Bruno's population data that goes as far back as nineteen ninety, and the city's budgeted full-time equivalent position information as far back as nineteen ninety-nine. And I've displayed it here, um, on this graph. So since nineteen ninety-nine, the city's population has grown by just over seven percent, uh, while the city's position count has actually declined by a little bit more than two percent within that same time period. This results in fewer city staff to serve the growing city population. In the past three budget years, though, additional positions have been approved, as you can see, uh, on the chart on the far right. Census population data is not yet available in those years, so I'd be happy to update this graph, um, with additional information each year, especially when, um, more recent population data is, is made available. So just a really brief overview of the city's budget. Um, our total all funds budget being proposed in nineteen twenty is about a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Of that, uh, fifty million dollars approximately is the city's general fund budget. The city does have a budgeted full-time equivalent position count of two hundred and sixty-seven positions. The CIP budget, which is very robust, um, which has over, um, a hundred and twenty projects in the budget, is approximately ninety-two million dollars. So we are a small, but not so small, city when you look at some of these high-level numbers. Moving on to the general fund specifically, this chart here shows the fiscal year eighteen nineteen adopted, amended, and the estimated, um, ending balances in the fund, and what staff is proposing in next fiscal year's budget. It's important to know that the revenues in the upcoming budget cycle are, uh, projected to grow at approximately eight percent compared to the current year budget, while at the same time, the expenditures were only projecting to grow at five percent. So this is in line with council priorities and the city manager's, um, directions and guidance to staff about, uh, maintaining a status quo budget and really looking at minimizing any expenditure increases if we can control them. The two million dollar deficit that's been spoken of earlier does include a number of enhancement requests that council adopted as part of the current fiscal year budget, um, and a few, um, changes that were made during the operating year to appropriate, um, available fund balance in the general fund during that time. So as you can see in the nineteen twenty budget, uh, operating revenues are just over fifty million dollars, um, with operating expenditures just slightly over that, um, resulting in a net operating, uh, deficit of just over three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And council did provide direction, uh, to staff to see if we can go back and identify ways of achieving a balanced operating budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty. And so this slide, um, is a summary of the proposed strategies that staff have developed to address that deficit. There are several one-time expenditures that are being proposed to be funded using available fund balance in the general fund, which is a common best practice, uh, for funding one-time items coming out of fund balance. These items include, um, about, include a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the streets division, um, for, uh, funding to replace currently out-of-compliance traffic, uh, signs. In the current fiscal year, there, um, approximately seven hundred will be replaced, but there are a total of twenty-seven hundred citywide. So this is, this will be money that will be used for that. The proposed budget also includes just over fifty-eight thousand dollars of one-time service level enhancements. Uh, an example of that is the ADA Transition Plan. Um, and then also, at city council's request at a prior study session, staff is going to include a seventy-five thousand dollar allocation, uh, an enhancement request for wildfire, uh, mitigation that will be placed in the Parks Department. So with that, the revised operating deficit is actually a little bit higher at four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, but when you adjust by taking out the one-time enhancements that will, that we are proposing to be funded by fund balance, the adjusted operating deficit is just over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So in order to address this deficit, staff are recommending a reduction to the general fund expenditures through reducing services. And this will take the form of delaying the hiring of the building assistant planner, the community development technician, the parks and facilities services manager, and the, and the central garage mechanic, which are four position enhancement requests that are before you in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. The delay of hiring will achieve some salary-infringe benefit savings. And then also, during the year, through just natural turnover and attrition that the city would experience, um, staff will hold those positions vacant for between up to one, uh, to up to three months, um, longer than we would normally want to hire them. So we will delay the hiring of positions that do become vacant, and we will achieve, we will achieve over a hundred thousand dollars of savings by that action. So with those service level reductions, we are proposing to balance the budget to zero. So the next slide is a summary of the reserves in the general fund. We presented this at the study sessions, um, and it's important to note that the proposed budget does assume meeting all of the reserve targets in the city's reserve policy that council has adopted. The only change from what was presented in a prior study session is that the assumed, um, minor increase in the general fund balance, um, from the first, from the first line, um, from those service level reductions that I just spoke about, will actually increase the fund balance by just over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And so the fund balance will increase to just over two point two million dollars in nineteen twenty, which is just over seven hundred thousand dollars more than the one point five million dollar target in the reserve policy. point five million dollar target in the reserve policy. So moving on to the four enterprise funds, just a high level summary table of what the beginning fund balance is projected to be in the water enterprise at just over twenty-six million dollars. Through the through the utility fees that are charged for the utility payers for water service and any capacity charges for hookups for new projects coming online are the revenue sources in the enterprise fund, just over sixteen million dollars. Total operating expenses are just under just over ten million dollars. That leaves a surplus in the operating in the operating pot so that the water enterprise can use that for its very robust and aggressive capital improvement program. You can see the capital improvement budget is over eighteen million dollars, bringing the fund balance actually down to fourteen million dollars compared to twenty to where I projected to be at twenty-six million dollars by the end of the current fiscal year. The wastewater enterprise has a very similar operating model. Again, most of its revenue comes from utility payments for wastewater services as well as capacity hookups for properties. You can see that the operating revenues are well above what's necessary to sustain the operations, but again, that money is used for the robust capital improvement program that's detailed in the capital improvement program pages in the in the in the budget before you. The stormwater enterprise, as we've talked about in the study session, has its challenges. Unfortunately, there is not adequate dedicated revenue coming into the stormwater enterprise fund to sustain not only the operating expenses just to maintain the compliance standards, but also to fund any capital improvement projects. I mentioned before that any capital improvements for stormwater have historically been funded by the city's general fund capital reserve. This will be an area of concern in the upcoming budget cycle and going forward that I articulated on the five-year financial plan slides during our study sessions and in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, we are projecting to run a negative fund balance. So this will be an area of review in the upcoming budget cycle going forward. For the cable enterprise fund, you'll you'll see in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen amended budget column that there was an ending fund balance of negative twenty-seven million dollars. We've corrected that substantially in the proposed budget before you by defunding the fiber to the home, the citywide fiber to the home project. There, as we mentioned earlier, there was no dedicated revenue to actually fund that project in the eighteen nineteen budget. So in the nineteen twenty budget, we are proposing to defund that project and then bring it back to you at a later time if and when the city has is able to identify a dedicated funding source so we can appropriate the expenditure for that project at that time as well. It's also important to note here that we are projecting that the cable enterprise will come in at budget for its operating budget by the end of fiscal year eighteen nineteen due to many of the great work that the cable department has done with renegotiating a number of their contracts and and in creating a new rate card that meets many of the customers' needs and has higher margins for the business. You'll actually see in the fiscal year nineteen twenty proposed budget that there is a small operating surplus that's being projected at four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So moving on to the internal service fund, service funds, this is a slide that was presented at a study session as well. Important to note here that we are using available fund balance in one of the city's funds to transfer into the central garage, building and facilities and technology internal service funds in order to meet the the target reserve requirement set in the city's reserve policy. The city has not historically been able to do that and the city manager's budget before you is proposing to do that. And we feel that it's important that these funds have adequate reserves in the case of an emergency or something comes up during the operating year. Staff want to be able to address it as quickly and expeditiously as possible. So here's an overview of the city's CIP budget for nineteen twenty. Overall, the CIP budget has over one hundred and twenty projects that benefit all those who work, live and play and visit in San Bruno. There are some very small-scale projects and very, very large, complex infrastructure projects detailed in the CIP. Overall, you will see carry-forward appropriations from prior fiscal years as well as new funding requests in fiscal year nineteen twenty on this slide. You'll also see a lot of the CIP information that was articulated in the prior enterprise slides as well. After the city council received the proposed budget at the study sessions, there were a few changes that were made to the CIP budget, which I wanted to make sure that you were aware of. The city council did direct staff to include a thirty thousand dollar request for an agenda management system for the city clerk. Staff went back and reviewed that request and the scope of that and have have confirmed that the funding is already available in one of the CIP projects that's already in the CIP budget called the Agenda Preparation and Document Management Solution project. There is adequate funding already in that project for the agenda management system. So there is no need for a specific appropriation request or a new CIP project in order to accomplish that. There's also a twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation for roof and grandstand improvements at the Tomlara Field using the general fund capital reserve. So we have created a new CIP project for that. The total project cost is approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to complete that project with the remaining one hundred and fifty thousand dollars not currently identified. It's important to note that the interior improvements of that project are funded by the San Bruno Lions Club and the San Bruno Community Foundation. And then two changes to water and wastewater first. In the the water main improvement and replacement program for avenues four dash two, there was a two point two million dollar request in that was included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. We had included a design budget. This is the construction budget along with that project. And then finally, we delayed the initiation of the sewer main improvement and replacement program for avenues four dash two just by one year, moving it out to fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. Those were the only changes made to the CIP budget from the last study session. A couple of weeks ago, staff included a new request in the equipment budget that was before you, using the general fund equipment reserve for seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for new lights and ballast in Diamond One and Diamond Two in City Park. These lights are in need of immediate repair and there are there are adequate funds in the equipment reserve fund to pay for this in the nineteen twenty budget, so we've included that request here before you. And there were no other changes made to the equipment or vehicle requests that were presented at a prior meeting. So moving on to the master fee schedule, on the city's website is the city's master fee schedule. It includes all the fees that the city charges for all different types of services and work. It's important that the city council does receive an annual update on the schedule and during the budget process, there's a resolution approving of the of the fee schedule again. The only recent updates that have been made to the fee schedule were to include the new development impact fee program. Those fees took effect on May first. The city updated the master fee schedule and did post that on the on the city's website. There are no updates to any fees being proposed in in coordination with the proposed budget at this time, and that's because the city city staff are 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 working currently on a user fee study that we've talked about with you before with a consultant and we are planning on bringing forth a comprehensive review of the city's fee schedule to make sure that our fees are cost-recoverable and address some policy considerations for council in the December-January timeframe. So we will be coming back to you at that time for potential changes to the fee schedule. The GAN limit, voters approved Proposition Four and Proposition one eleven, known as the GAN initiatives, which places a limit on the amount of tax-generated revenue that a local agency can receive and appropriate each year. The limit's based on actual appropriations from fiscal nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine, and it's adjusted each year by cost of living and population growth assumptions. Only revenue defined as proceeds as taxes, which in San Bruno are property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy are the hotel tax, and business taxes are restricted by this limit. And as shown in the detail in the attachment to the staff report, the adjusted fiscal year nineteen twenty appropriation is well below the limit. So we are in compliance with the with the law. The staff report does articulate a few alternatives for council to consider. You can this evening amend the appropriation amounts contained in the proposed budget at the time you choose to approve the budget if you would like. You also can choose to not approve of the proposed budget before you. That would be that would become effective on July first. In this case, you can adopt an alternate resolution assuring continued municipal operations. There is a resolution in your packet this evening, which which is your ability to act on if you choose to do so, and that alternate resolution is there. So those are the the two alternatives that that I prepared for you to consider. So my request to council again this evening is to adopt resolutions. The first is to adopt the resolution appropriating for the operating budget and the capital improvement program budget with these three changes that I've spoken about this evening. First, to include an additional enhancement of seventy-five thousand dollars for fire mitigation and to include service level reductions, reducing the general fund budget by one hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. And then also include an additional capital improvement program project for twenty-five thousand dollars using the general fund capital reserve for the Tomlara Field grandstand improvements. And then also approve of the of the GAN limit for fiscal year nineteen twenty as well as the master fee schedule for nineteen twenty. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager for some closing remarks.
All right. Thank you, Keith, for going through the details of the budget. To the mayor and city council, I want to say it's been my pleasure as your city manager to lead the development of this budget process. Tonight is the culmination of a lot of work on staff's part, on your part, and so I want to just thank everybody for that effort going into it. I also want to just repeat the number that Steve mentioned, one hundred and eighty-eight million dollars, and that's what this budget represents. It represents one hundred and eighty-eight million dollars that you would be authorizing to expend over the next twelve months to both support and protect the community of San Bruno. That includes funding for two hundred and sixty-four full-time employees and over ninety part-time staff that work throughout the year to provide services that we know from our recent survey that this community really desires and and values. So we also know that this budget was not an easy budget to come up with. Kind of my tagline that I created and have repeated throughout this process is our budget is stable, but it is not sustainable. And we certainly know that from our budget retreat in your direction that you gave at the very last time we met, which is, you know, two million dollar deficit. Last year, we were able to bring that down in the proposed budget to three hundred and seventy-six thousand and you said, you know what? We want to live within our means, so go back and sharpen your pencils. And so the information that Director Di Martini presented to you tonight is that pencil sharpening? I kind of joke, we didn't use pencils because we don't use those anymore. We 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 use spreadsheets. But we did. We certainly took your direction. And this budget is in line with the city council priority focus areas that we talked about back in February, and those priority focus areas are to continue to make progress on our transit corridors plan and revitalize downtown, rehabilitate community facilities and infrastructure, grow our city revenues and ensure continued economic vitality, strengthen community connections and engagement, improve the quality of life and protect the safety of this community, proactively plan for the future of this community, and last but certainly not least, ensure the continued organizational health and success of the organization. And that is that that two hundred and sixty-four full-time bodies and the over ninety part-time staff. So there is some good news in this budget. We've had steady growth in our revenues and our local economy is strong, and so that that eight percent growth factor that the director talked about is true and that's something that we should all be proud of. However, we do still have challenges. We have challenges in our general fund and challenges in a number of our enterprise funds. And so we have embarked on this year in a multi-year, multi-pronged effort to take a look at fiscal sustainability. And we didn't get into this position that we're in with significant financial challenges and deferred maintenance in one year, and we can't climb out in one year, but we have made a lot of progress. Coming up on next month will mark just over a year that I will have served as as your city manager, and I am proud of everything this organization has been able to accomplish in these eleven months. And one of our biggest challenges has been our cable enterprise, and we took your direction, which said, look into the cable enterprise and find a path forward. And we did that through providing you with a business plan, but we did more than that. And you deserve the credit because it was your prodding to take a look at the annual the monthly deficit that we were running in the cable enterprise. And there's a lot to be proud of. What is the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole? Stop the digging. And so we were losing money every month in the cable department, and with the budget before you, we we will no longer be doing that and we're on the path to recovery there. And so we went through that in detail at the retreat and I won't repeat it here, but there's a lot to be proud of on the progress that we've made. Going forward, we will have challenges over the next few years in attaining a balanced budget. We have been talking about revenue augmentation measures, both potentially putting something on the ballot, but also growing the revenues we have now. And we have a number of efforts currently underway, be they a audit of our TOT transit occupancy tax, be that be that an audit of all of our businesses that pay a business license. And so those efforts are ongoing and we have embarked on a process to do everything we can to develop, one, a balanced budget, two, to make enhancements that are critical for the health of the organization and services to this community, and three, to continue to make progress on achieving fiscal sustainability, which is the goal that you have set and something that this organization has really picked up. And so we are here tonight to answer any of your questions, but again, I just want to thank you for this process and the in-depth learning that has been shared, I think, both from us, from you, and providing a lot of detailed information that we were able to give and provide to you in that all-day retreat earlier this this month. So we are here. The proposed before you, the proposed budget is before you, and that concludes our staff presentation.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Di Martini, for being here in the presentation and to you and your staff for preparing and putting the budget together with the senior leadership team and all their work and effort. With that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to see if we have any speaker cards.
We do not.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this item? If we close public hearing, you'll be precluded from speaking later. Seeing no one, any action?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Okay, now we'll bring it back to council for questions, comments, or both.
To the chair.
Oh, good.
Then Laura.
So just a comment first off. So thank you, Joan, for all the effort on this and Keith, I know that you and the rest of the the leadership team, you guys put a lot of time and effort into this and I just wanted to comment that, you know, we we asked and you delivered, so you brought us back exactly what we asked for and I do certainly appreciate that. I know it took a lot of of creative maneuvering and last-minute, you know, adjustments to make it happen, but you you brought us back exactly what we requested and so just wanted to thank you for that. The only request I have going forward, I I do still want to make sure that at some point in the coming year, we go back and and review our reserve policy because I do think we are still a little deficient in that. So, you know, as we move forward, I know there's, you know, nothing left over this year, but going forward, when we do have some surplus, I want to make sure that we start socking away a little bit more to take care of some of those longer-term needs that are still unmet.
Note it. Laura?
To the chair, great job, you guys. Great job by all from the senior leadership team. I appreciated the retreat that we had. I think that was an impressive day, excellent presentations and so much work leading up to that, and so I know that that doesn't that is not easy. I felt like going through the city budget process last year, my head was just spinning and trying to make sense of it, but I think, Keith, this year you did a fabulous job and and all your presentations have really been spot-on. Irene, thank you for the request. I'm looking really at- I'm looking really at the city population and employees. It's a really good, it's a, it's an impressive slide and it really tells you a lot about what we do with so little, even though things continue to grow in terms of population. So I appreciate that as well. You know, I think city managers said it very well, right? You know, this is, this is, this is a good budget, but it's, can we sustain this? And, you know, this is actually, I feel this is, can we just pause this and freeze this time, right? Because we're at a good place. And what's to come in the next, in the coming years, whether it's employee benefits, contracts are expiring, and as you mentioned, a number of different things, actually scares me going forward in terms of how we balance the budget, right? Because things are continuing to grow. So, you know, the team, whether it's the council and staff is all, we're on the same page, we're working toward the same goals. And I think that we've clearly identified important, important goals in terms of looking at different revenues. And, and Keith, the work that you've done in reviewing different programs and, you know, you know, even saying, gee, what are we doing and are we making money doing this? And is it, is it makes sense to approve a master fee schedule today with all the little details and go through and increase these line items without really stepping back and making sense of that and raising it to costs it really should be? And thank you to the cable in terms of the, the changes and the strides that you've made. And I know that's been some huge effort. So I, I think my questions have been answered and I, a couple of the comments that I have and thank you to Mayor Medina for requesting some details on the community day in the park. You know, one of the quick things off my, the top, I would say is I'd like to think about maybe trimming some of the costs when just the rides. And I know that, you know, it's an expensive thing for the city and it had the impact that it really could. Could we come back next year with a, a little bit different spin on it? Do a lot of the, some of the same things, but do more carnival games that are less expensive, that get more kids to participate? I just noticed on, on community day, you know, walking around and I see a lot of little kids that just can't get on those rides. And there's a, it's a lot of money spent and it really can't address the vast majority of those kids. And they stand in long lines and there's really not a lot for them, but it's a big expense and I, I know that rides are very expensive. So it'd be great maybe to get more groups together to come out and maybe sponsor a booth. Maybe the council can sponsor a booth and we can have a, I don't know, throw a pie at the, the council member, I don't know. But maybe we could use some of the millions less expensive. So looking at ways to cut costs because we don't know whether or not some of these revenues are coming in, will continue to come in, whether, you know, we're going to get X amount of dollars from certain donations or whether those funds can't go towards something else. So if we can cut some costs, I, I'm looking forward to that. I also have concerns in the recreation department in, in terms of hiring a new manager. I think that that's an important piece. I know that it's an overwhelming department and we do need that position. I'm concerned about getting the work done. So I struggle with that one and I'll wait to hear more from other council members. And the other area that I struggle with is, and I've shared my comments with, as well as with, with the manager, about the full-time maintenance person. And, you know, I would love to say, can we approve a position which is temporary, reassess that whole department and then move forward with a permanent position? So I'd like to get more discussion from, from council on that item as well. And those are my concerns. Thank you.
When you say maintenance.
The full.
Mechanic?
Mechanic, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Facilities and parks and recreation and then mechanic.
Okay. We're here. Okay. Are there questions or comments from council? Irene, or Marty, who was?
I, I do think the presentation was impressive, all of them, all the study session, the session last time at the city council meeting and, and this one. So I really appreciate it and thank you. And thank you for having it all online so people can really dive into it. So that was impressive. I appreciate you trying to sharpen your methodical pencil and, and cutting the budget down. I, I have two concerns with that, though. I, I know it takes a long time to hire anyone. The process itself is long and sometimes because of that, let me, let me, we have in the past lost people that we would have hired. So I'm concerned that delaying hiring the people in the, yeah, the, all the different three, I think it was, you were going to delay them for three months. I'm concerned we're, we're already, you know, it already takes so long. If we delayed even more, we're, we're not going to have the quality people apply that we would want to have. So I would urge the council to rethink that piece. It's, I think it was $57,000, a relatively small amount in a $188 million budget. So I, I'd like to not delay those hirings. That's one. And I just want to reiterate what you all said about the storm drains and the, the compliance with the state regulations. They're getting more and more stringent. The compliances, the method of complying with those regulations are getting more and more expensive and it's just overwhelming. So I know we're going to be looking at that. I know we're going to have a lot of input laters, but I just want to reiterate what you've already said already. And again, thank you for adding that slide about the population. It's fascinating to look at. Thank you.
Marty?
Thank you, Jovan. Thank you, staff. I feel, I feel right now with our budget, it's, it's this opportunity to kind of take this breath and kind of just before we move forward with these additional costs and getting, getting things balanced is an opportunity to do that. Yet I still want to emphasize the appreciation and the need for, for these different positions. And I, I have struggled with, when we have a new city manager who's telling us something that we really, really need something, not only in these meetings here in public, but in our one-on-ones, it's a very convincing argument. So I appreciate the, the timeframes that were shifted around to, to allow this to occur. But we have a responsibility to pass a budget now and I think that's something perhaps that we can come back to and, and talk about that later, about dealing with the hiring I'm most convinced that the parks, facilities manager is something that should be sooner than later. I was not convinced on the mechanic. I, I would, would have appreciated to hear a little bit more about efforts to get the basic services conducted through outside vendors for oil changes and, and the like. I, I think, I'm hoping that something could still be looked at there. I do appreciate hearing from our community development director, Darcy Smith, and the need for the staffing there. But I think it comes down to, we, we really have to try to, to do better into living with, with what's coming in and what's going out, to try to have that balance. And we're not going to be able to do that easily in the future without some enhancements. And, and, and I'm, I'm just glad that we can get this budget out and, and then move forward to figure out how we're going to fund all the necessary work. I'm, I'm not happy with higher water and sewer rates like everybody else, but if you look into the budget, that money's being spent at a high rate to, to replace the failing, aging infrastructure in our city. And if I'm not, maybe somebody could help me here in staff about how many pump stations have been replaced? How many, how many offsets in our sewer have been repaired? That's important, I think, to help the public understand that there, there are dollars, those rate increases were necessary to catch up to the increasing costs that will continue going forward. I am just amazed that in a short amount of time in our cable enterprise, that we've been able to turn that around by going back, as has been said, renegotiating contracts, cutting some services. It's, it's in, it's in one of our staff reports of there was reduction in service. How do we move forward with balancing things if, if our revenues aren't keeping up or in this case, they are, eight, eight percent increase in, in our revenues and five percent in our expenditures, yet we still have a long way to go to get things fixed in our city, the city that we all want? The biggest, one of the biggest things, and I think you're seeing in the surveys, is people are concerned about when are they going to get their street paved? And it's going to cost us millions of dollars. And at the rate that the money's coming in, it'll be many, many years. And getting that year to be able to tell an, an individual property owner of their street so that we could show them based on what we're getting in now, it's going to take 15 years maybe to get there? I don't know. Whatever it is, I think it's important for our public to know. So with the cable, I wanted to make sure, because somebody did ask me about this, that defunding doesn't mean that we're not going forward with the cable enterprise. And I was wondering if staff could give a really short status update on where we are with the financing for that and when that plan could come back to council for us to make some determination.
Sure. Jovan Grogan, city manager. I'm going to answer, answer the first part, which is what does defunding mean? So the action that we're proposing that the city council take in the budget is more of a accounting slash budgetary entry than actually taking $10 million away that was funded of the project. When the $10 million was approved in the 18, 19 budget, the city was going to go out and look for financing mechanisms to fund that $10 million. And so it would essentially be new revenue that would come in, in the form of some sort of bond or debt financing. And so we are still very much looking into all avenues to fund the project, either all at one time or to phase it. That work is ongoing. And so we do plan to finalize that work and bring options to, to the city council, at which time we would then request a, an appropriation. But we want it to complete that work versus continue what is approved in the current year's budget, which is a $10 million where the funds have not yet been secured.
Thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the fire mitigation that, that was budgeted. And then, then again, it, it's another example of, well, there's $75,000 budgeted. Well, it's, it's likely going to cost much more than that to, to get everything, all our open spaces, all our wild, wildfire mitigated, our areas mitigated. So I also wanted to piggyback on Councilman Salazar's request to reexamine the reserve Councilman O'Connell's point on the storm drains, it's a, it's a huge problem that is not going to go away anytime soon and we'll have to find a, find a funding mechanism for that. I do have one modification that I would like to bring to the council's and staff's attention for consideration. There's a project on page 368, project 82106. I'll give everybody a moment to catch up to that. And basically, what, basically what this project is, is to design and construct garbage and recycling privacy screens at our public parking lots. This project was, according to this report here, was identified in fiscal year 2014 and 15 for $100,000 allocated. That's page 368. And I think that that money would be better suited to stripe parking lots, specifically the one here at the senior center, also to be used for striping the Bel Air or Lionsfield parking lot. If you, if, if anybody's been down to Bel Air, that pavement marking is gone. And so it's, it's really crammed in parking situation over there. And I believe in when we try to do something new, that we should find a way to pay for it. And I think this is one way to do it. If we haven't, if we're not really planning to, to deal with this garbage and recycling screens on our parking lots, then we should just go ahead and just say we're not going to do it and use that money for, for striping things that are definitely going to be needed today. And we can move forward with that. So that's my one request that the council consider while we're dealing with the budget.
Well, I just, that was a budget request that I made in 2014 in response to people making, complaining about the trash that gets left and is unsightly in the public parking lots behind, especially behind San Mateo Avenue. And that was, that was why it was put in there. It's never progressed because there was no funding for it. So it's just been, as far as I remember, a placeholder for that. So, you know, that's, I don't, I don't even think there's real money for it. I think it's just something that was put in there because I wanted it to happen and it never did.
Got it. It does say estimated carryover, so I think money's there unless.
I, I don't know.
There's a typo here. I don't know.
So.
City manager?
So that is a project that was requested and it is under the purview of the community development department. And this is unfortunately, I think, a prime example of a funding request with a need, but without the staff to execute it. And so the, the project sat for a while. And we did not recommend defunding that project in this budget. One of the things we need to do is go through our projects and as we have more staff, as we get through our projects and figure out, okay, when can we get this project done and does it need additional funding? I will note at a high level, one of the things that we did do with this budget, and it was in one of the slides at the retreat, is that when you took a, when you take a look at the, in total, the amount of money that was authorized for new projects in this year versus prior years, it was lower this year. That was a conscious effort because we did not want to allocate new money for projects that we knew we would not get to. What we wanted to do, because we know that we already have a backlog of funded projects that we have not been able to get to. And so absolutely we need to look into this project and likely others as we have the staffing and the resources to execute on them. If the city council would like to make a, a strategic decision to tell us, you know what? This was a request and we do not want you to do any work on this and we want to apply those funds somewhere else, we can totally make that decision tonight. Or we could go back and return to you at a later date with a plan for this project and others.
Marty, other questions, comments?
No, that was it. I, I just, I don't know if it's an error that if money's been expended out of the project, that it means that the money was there, but.
No. It was likely initial planning work, but there is, there is not an error. There is $98,000 left in that project that has not been spent.
Right. Okay. So I, we need to, we need to, we need to stripe our, our parking lots. And I, I guess if the council does agree, I think it's a lot quicker to stripe parking lots than design and construct garbage screens. So I think it's a great idea, just that. So I think it's a great idea, just that at some point, we need to put paint on, paint on the street, paint on the pavement. So I'll leave it for the council to decide if they want to do that in this budget or later, but it needs to get done.
Fair. In regard to striping our parking lots, all the lots downtown have recently been redone. The parking lot in the senior center is an active project, and I can have staff get up if you'd like a status on where that project is. But the parking lots downtown have all recently been repaved. The one that actually was being restripped yesterday is the one closest to the plaza because that was being used by the plaza during construction. But I think if they're not done today, within the next few days, all the parking lots downtown will have been restripped.
Is there any plan to stripe the baseball Lions Field?
I can't answer that at this point. And we can certainly investigate this project and potentially defunding it and applying the money to another Measure A eligible expense that may be striping at a recreation field, and it may not be allowed for that. So we would need to look into that before making that decision tonight.
Thank you.
Maybe on a suggestion of that, since some of the striping is being done, or as the seniors are actively, because Marty, you pointed out one item, like you said, can those resources be spent for something that's going to get initiated quicker? But I think, City Manager, you brought up about can come back in looking into the Measure A versus where we're at two, but you also talked about reviewing a little bit as well, the others. And I'm thinking if we're going to take a look at one, we should be more global and look at, look at them all and say, well, should this project be discontinued? And maybe we didn't see it on the first time to be defunded, and then something else should be allocated to it. So maybe, would that be helpful with us getting those other answers?
Sure. We'll go back, we'll take a look at that project, and we'll look at other projects that could either be de-sculpted or defunded to apply funds to other projects.
Marty, what do you think of that?
That's fine, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Marty?
No, that was it. That was it.
Thank you. So for myself, I'm not going to go into great detail because I think a lot of folks have said things from Michael, as far as the reserve policy agree. You know, another colleague, as far as trimming the cost of community day, because in essence, now seeing the full figures, you know, we may have, what was it, 26,500 for rides, and we got a little over $10,000 for wristbands. So in essence, that's the expenditure. The community day, as far as allocation from the foundation, is a $30,000 element, which is gone, which will be going away. So, you know, will we be able still to have that? We have staff expense. What I do appreciate is it gave a very big picture to all costs that were tracked as far as overtime, extra staffing, porta potties, a stage, ice. It was very detailed. And so what wasn't tracked at all last year, there was one or two items, but they were certainly tracked this year, which gave a very big picture to that. But again, what I worry about too, was we're spending about $27,000 on rides and having it more of a carnival atmosphere might be of help as we did at the centennial. Also, if the weather were to go south that day, we may not have a lot of takers who want to buy wristbands, or if they hadn't already. So I just worry a little bit about that. So the trimming element, I think there are things. You know, do we need a stage? We had it in the centennial, but is it necessary today? Does it get the use for the monies that we're spending? I also had two areas, and they were already echoed. One was the mechanic, and one was in the parks facility manager. I'm going to say what one colleague said here too, is that, you know, the manager and department director has made a, I won't say passion, I'll say a statement of what needs and what is lacking. So, you know, for me, it was a no. For me, I'm a little bit more on the fence, but I still have some concerns as well, and I've expressed those to the city manager as well, so it's not the first time he's heard that. To be candid and upfront, I think that's what makes us work well together as a team is having that. So those are my initial comments. And also with Irene, as far as the storm compliance, that's something we keep bringing up, but we know is getting closer, and it's not going to get easier. And the cost isn't going down either. So those are some of my initial comments on things that were mentioned, but also, you know, I think it does need to be echoed, Sunday, to you and your team. You know, I love saying this is the first time in how long that you're going to see that the cable department is balanced, as far as not in the deficit category, but as far as its operating. That is through diligence and effort of going back and trying to figure out ways in which to save. I also know that your department, along with the finance director, have been very conscientious as you're finishing out this budget cycle, as far as expenditures and insuring and changing and making such a change in a short time, that those things don't turn around that quick normally. So it's a compliment to both of you and to all your team that they're doing. The internal fund revenues, I mean, that's a positive too, as well as meeting that obligation. So there are some positives. It is a tight year, and it's, you know, as years progress, we still have to be mindful. I think also it talked about when we have amendments to the budget and the quarterly reviews that the finance director brings forward, that we want to have the bottom line of where we're at. So we don't want to just know where the amendment, where it's going. We want to know the true, are we in a deficit? Are we in the positive? What are the projections as you very closely and detail watch this? And I know you do that very diligently. So with that said, those are some of my comments. I will continue to echo what my colleagues have said. But there are a few things, I'm going to assume from council, that as far as approving the city appropriations for the GAN limit, I don't know that anybody has any concerns or questions specifically to that. I'm wondering if on approving the city's master fee schedule, if anybody has any concerns or questions on that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Only concern on that one, the staff report indicated there was an attachment with specifics on it. That attachment wasn't in the report, so, and I know there weren't, there wasn't probably a whole lot to report in there anyway, but if we are going to reference an attachment, maybe we can make sure that gets into the final posted packet. That's it.
Fair point. Then we also obviously have the operating budget and the CIP budget. In addition with those are enhancements. So what I'd like to see is if we can build consensus, and so we'll have fewer motions, and so we have, because we have truly one resolution. So we can go at it different ways. If on the operating budget itself, if you want to take enhancements and have discussion on a couple of the items that I heard, if we're okay with the one time, we can all concur to that. And those are the one time, not the ongoing costs. So I'm looking for any thoughts. I want to make sure everybody has to be heard and, you know, we're building consensus on this.
Through the chair, I think you've made some good suggestions and maybe getting a vote on some of these things that I think we all have consistent comments on. But I do like the idea of maybe breaking it down from one-time costs into individual enhancements that are ongoing.
Through the chair?
Mike?
Just to state a sort of different position on that. This budget, I believe, has been, in terms of preparation, the one that we've spent more time on than any budget as far back as I can remember. And we've had so many opportunities to go back and comment and adjust and pivot. So personally, I'm, you know, I think that we've had more than enough opportunity to pick it apart and to kind of, you know, interject things. I get really concerned when we start making last-minute adjustments up here. You know, I think you stated very well, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, making the project-specific decisions up here would be very difficult because we're looking at one specific project which could potentially impact other projects. And if we're going to reprioritize, we really should look at the whole portfolio of projects and figure out maybe from a policy standpoint, if there are certain types of projects that we would want to address above others. And I think that would be a more appropriate decision for the council to make rather than start, you know, looking at individual projects and making, you know, independent decisions on one or the other. So I personally would be okay with just doing, just moving that we approve the budget as it's presented and not picking it apart. And another reason why I say that is, I think, I believe last year, we decided to break it apart, and then we still approved everything at the end, even after going through all these separate things, so.
That's why I want to build a consensus and not start going one by one if there's a couple.
Right.
Because I've only heard, I think, two, one thing was to go back, community day, and just kind of fine-tune it and just make sure that we're living within the means of the day. And I've heard two positions. Other than that, and council can correct me, aside from the one that Marty, you brought up, I'm going to come back with, I haven't heard, I've heard, I think, except for two things, I think I heard everybody else concurring to everything, including the GANs limit and the master fee schedule. So we've made progress from last year.
And to clarify, you mentioned it was one resolution, but I believe there were three resolutions, so we...
In the essence, as I was talking to the city clerk, is that we made a lot of motions last time to the main resolution, and it just kept going and going and going like you indicated. Instead of just saying, okay, what are we down to? If it's two things, let's talk, and if not, let's move. Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, all right.
Yeah, thank you.
So let's get that consensus. Thank you.
Council, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just want to kind of echo what Michael said, and we have to keep remembering, this is a document that we can amend and change at any time. But the deadline right now is to keep it going because the old budget ends June 30th, next, like Monday, the new budget has to start. So if we approve it the way it is, which is a zero deficit, it has the, and if you look on whatever page, it doesn't matter, so the, it has the enhancements of the fire mitigation requests that I think is an excellent idea that you had, Marty, and I think that's a fabulous thing to do. And it had the...
Laura Field.
The Laura Field, and it had a few other small things. But the bottom line is it's a zero operating, a zero deficit operating budget. And if we can all live with what is presented here, I can even live with the rest, and we can dig around with it later on. And I, are you moving that we approve the budget as it stands with a zero deficit and make modifications at a later point?
As long as my colleagues are okay with moving forward at this point, then I...
I will tell you, I'm still, I'm more on the, on the two positions, but mechanic is the specific one. And why, why I'm saying that, and I've explained that, is I think we need somewhat of a fleet study and to see the overall bigger picture again, because I know we used to have four, we have two, we want to add one, but there were questions that came up and about our current fleet, what is done internally, what is done because of its technical element. So that is something, though, we've talked about having it delayed anyway, the position. So that's what I'm trying to figure in my mind, too, what would best serve the city at this point, is an overall review of the fleet and what its needs and assessments are before applying a position of full time, which again, you can't go back in time and say, well, now that we've done that, we're going to take that back, unless it's through attrition.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought that this budget delayed hiring any of those enhancements, including the mechanic.
It does.
It approves him, but delays the hiring of him.
Okay, but we can delay the hiring of them?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. Or we can take them out.
Can we do that?
I mean, or we may have a conversation later and say, you know, community day, we should limit it to, you know, have a budget of $25,000, and, I mean, all those things can happen.
Jevon, it looks like you want to go ahead.
Sure. So the proposed budget, as amended before you, includes the enhanced position, takes away the funding for those positions for six months, so we really could not hire them until January 2020. And so the position that the mayor talked about, which is the mechanic position, is one of those positions. If the city council desires to delay that position in favor of obtaining a fleet study, as the mayor suggested, that is something that would need to be funded. A fleet study, in my expertise, is about $30,000 to $40,000, having been a consultant that has done them before. Maybe it can be done at a lower amount, I just don't, I don't know until we go out and do the RFP. But that would roughly be the cost. I can't tell you that we could actually execute a contract and get it done in six months. We could certainly get it done in the fiscal year and return back to you with the assessment of that. But we would need to fund that with one-time money, and we could either do that tonight or we could do that at a later date.
Okay, so...
So through the chair, I'm in agreement with that proposal on that mechanic position. I have a hard time approving that position at this time, and I'd like to, I think, I'm okay with approving the budget as is, as long as we can talk about the permanent positions as they come back, and we would review those then.
Okay. I think we're going to need clarity. So when you say, are you talking about any of the...
I'm sorry, just the mechanic as well as the supervisor position, manager position in the recreation department.
The facilities?
Parks and facilities.
It's the facilities manager, yes.
Okay.
I'm in agreements, in agreement with that as well, personally.
All right, to make it really easy, I'll go ahead and agree with that, and then we'll have our three, and then we could just move forward, and we'll reevaluate at that point.
I'm not clear, though, what's being requested, that we're going to pull those positions out, or we're just going to revisit them at some point before they're hired?
Well, I would prefer to pull them out for now and not approve them with the budget until, A, we get a fleet study, I'm in agreement to that, I think it's an important piece. I guess, let's back up a second. So I think Mayor Medina stated it pretty well. You know, we're going to move forward with a full-time position. We're seeing our purse costs go up, we're seeing our healthcare costs go up. I, it needs to make sense that we're going to hire this full-time position. I know it seems like we need it, and I know that there is a few people doing that job, and we can't do it successfully, but what's the right solution? Because we, many, many different cities and many different companies do it differently, right? Somebody doesn't, somebody doesn't touch any of the work, right? Some send things out to get oil changes, some things get changed out to get smog tested, et cetera. So I'm looking to see what we can do that's most feasible, that's most economical. And we don't have the time right now to get that assessment to approve this budget. So I prefer for the mechanic position for that to be pulled until we can get that assessment. On the parks facilities person, it's again, for me, I think it's a facility that it's a service that we offer to our community. It's not a necessity. It's not police, it's not fire, it's not streets, it's not sewer. And in some cases, maybe we need to make some more cuts, because we've got, coming up in this, end of the year, we've got contracts coming up. So I have a hard time hiring that manager. We want to talk about hiring somebody that's going to help maintain facilities and maintain parks or maintain weeds and things we can't get to, we keep putting off and off, that's a different thing. But I have a hard time with that position. I think that we should be able to try to do it with what we have right now. That's my position. So maybe we can come back and get a better assessment and a better understanding of that department and where the problems are, where the issues are. But there's been a long history of things changing and moving, people getting increases, and I'm not happy with the department and where we're at today asking for another position. So that's the clarification on those two.
And for me, similar on the mechanic, but I would say to bring back the parks facilities manager. I don't want to just see it go away without further discussion or clarification. In the past two budgets, I think they've been brought up, I believe, in the last two budgets, and I haven't supported that. I am more amenable, but I need to be a little more convinced. So I would want to, personally, I'd like to see it come back.
So Marty, from your standpoint, would you be okay with approving them and then bringing them back, or do you want to just see them eliminated for now?
I want to pass a budget. I want to do it responsibly. I believe a position is needed. Defining, defining what they're doing and the consequences of what happens to the person that's currently doing part of that work, or has that responsibility for doing that work, that needs to be ironed out for me. Based on what Laura was saying, I, I don't have a strong of a, of an experience in the park and rec department. But when a park and rec commissioner tells me that there's something there that needs to be examined, I'm going to go along with that. If we, I just want to be able to come back, to be able to have a say in a few months from now of... examined, I, I'm going to go along with that, if we, I just want to be able to come back, to be able to have a say in a few months from now of, of, of what that, what that final answer is going to be, to get the budget passed today, if it means pulling it and eliminating it, or does it mean that it'll be brought back to us at a later time, which is kind of almost the same thing, just one's more drastic action of just saying we're going to cut it, I believe that, I believe that position is needed in some form, just that I think I will need a little more information and data on it, but I, I hear our city managers' plea for necessity of that, so I, I want to be mindful and of that, but I still need to pass the budget tonight, so that's kind of where I'm at, I.
I don't know if he's, I, I think, the question was, is, or do you want to have it pulled and brought back so that the rest of the budget can go forward? I think that was, was Michael.
Really simple, would that, but the other option is what? What is our other option?
We approve it and just revisit it, like you said, less drastic, but maybe.
Okay, revisit it with our approval to, to, to here upon this matter, I'm willing to do that, too.
Through, through the chair, I think whatever decision is made tonight, we need to be very clear on the actions that will go forward, you guys are the elected representatives for this community, all we can do is give you our best professional judgment, and you make the ultimate decision on allocation of resources for the organization. The decisions that are before you appear to be, approve the budget as revised, which has the positions authorized, but funding beginning January 2020, which means that if either of those positions are approved, we would delay the recruitment, but we would start the recruitment because they are authorized positions and aim to bring those bodies on by January. The other option is to not approve one or all of the positions, and we would not do any work to begin any recruitment on those positions, and we would then, because I think all of them are an absolute organizational necessity, bring you back additional information to provide additional justification, I would, I would, for, for the fleet position, I would certainly want to do that through a fleet study, because I, I think that is the best and most appropriate way to get you the answers that, that have been raised, for the parks and facility management, similarly, I would recommend, I would recommend an organizational assessment, because this position has been requested numerous years, the organizational structure that we have for our parks and facilities maintenance is not appropriate, and that is my professional assessment, that has been the professional assessment of this organization for multiple years now, we do not have a manager supervising our parks maintenance and our facility maintenance, we have supervisors and line staff doing the work, and so, to, to maintain our facilities, our critical facilities, and our community facilities and the appropriate manager, this organization has requested a, a management position, the city council can decide that we, that those resources are not allocated, and I think the next appropriate way to provide you with more information is to have an outside entity come out and do an assessment of the department, and provide the city council with benchmarking on how other cities are structured, and how the work can be done for, for those two positions, because I think the city council is asking questions that they are uncomfortable with the assessment that has been, that has been made, made by staff, and that is totally your right, and so, we need to provide you with additional information if you're not comfortable authorizing the positions.
And, and just to my colleagues, too, I think as we're discussing the positions, I think it's, it's not our place, or is it relevant about what we've heard, or what people say, or what gossip is, or whether you've worked here or not, that's, that's not relevant to your overall health of the organization, so, what I am suggesting, I'll just take the lead here, what I am suggesting is to have those two positions pulled out of the approval of this budget, to have more additional information brought forward, whether it's a fleet study or an assessment, and have those come back at a later time, but not to be included in the approval of tonight's budget, does that, does that make sense?
Is that your motion?
If, if that is the direction, that is clear for the budget approval.
Because I know we're all asking each other, but that's, that's my feeling.
So, is that your motion?
Unless anybody else has any other, I haven't made a motion in a while.
Well, Michael and I were.
Yeah, I mean.
So, we're, we're two people here, and then if, then we were waiting for Marty to decide which way.
Okay.
I, I appreciate the, the additional information, so, I'm willing to go along with that, that we go ahead and, as the mayor, as you said, and then it gets brought back, now are we approving the funding for those studies at this point?
No.
No, because we don't know where that would come from. Those would have to come back.
Okay, right, right, okay, all right, I, I thought the city manager did say.
Well, council has two choices, you can allocate money for, for the studies, or we can bring an item before you with the approximate cost of the studies and ask for an allocation at that time.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so, any action on the budget? We've heard each other, I don't know that there's more comments or anything, but, yes, Laura.
I'll motion to approve the budget with the two amendments to remove the position for the mechanic, as well as the facilities manager, until those can be brought back to council, requesting funding for an assessment, and then review and approval at a later date.
Second?
Yeah, okay, so, there's a motion made in second, and Melissa, do you want to read it back?
For clarification, is that an amendment, is that a recommendation, a motion for approving the fiscal year 2019, 20 operating and fiscal year 2020, 24 capital improvement program budget as amendments are stated?
Yes, thank you.
Second, I still there?
Yes, yes, yes. Still bow.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the approving of the city appropriation scan limit, correct? And we'll need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And finally, the city's master fee schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye, thank you, and you can't see it on TV, but I really want to, the council wishes to thank Mr. DiMartini for making your extra effort to be here today, we appreciate it very much, and I know this is your first budget, so we appreciate, I saw him today at City Hall, and I said, is this what you, you do to approve a budget? But, you know, with your injury, but thank you for taking the extra time to be here, I can't tell you on a personal level, to the senior leadership team, to the city manager, to yourself, Mr. DiMartini, that the difference in the budget and its presentation, the more in-depth studies that we did, and looking at it very, you know, with great detail and a lot of questions, and not just doing it to do it, you really put a lot of heart and dedication into it, and your team did, so if you can convey that back, and obviously we still have some more work to conclude on it, but thank you to all, conduct to business. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we're going to have a, just a couple-minute break, and, and we'll recess. Okay, we're going to reconvene the San Bruno City Council meeting of June 25th, and we're on conduct to business.
Item 7A, adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of six vehicles in the amount of $469,040, appropriating an amount not to exceed $60,000 for vehicle equipment installation and customization, and appropriating available funds in the general equipment revolving fund in the amount of $20,040 for the cost increase in the revised vehicle purchase price.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Dennis Bosch, and I am your Public Works Deputy Director of Maintenance and Operations, tonight I am presenting for approval vehicle purchasing contracts for replacement vehicles that were previously identified and approved from the 2018-2019 fiscal budget year. This proposal is to authorize the purchase of six vehicles in the amount of $469,040, an appropriation of an amount not to exceed $60,000 for vehicle equipment installation and customization, and appropriating available funds in the general equipment revolving fund in the amount of $20,040 for the cost increase in revised up-to-date vehicle purchase prices. For some background, council created a vehicle replacement subcommittee in 2018 to discuss all aspects of city vehicle replacement, aspects such as needs, wear and tear conditions, and the overall replacement process, staff previously presented replacement vehicle proposals for 2017, 2018, and 2018, 2019 fiscal years to the council subcommittee, staff then further answered the council members' detailed questions regarding individual, individual vehicles that are being presented for replacement tonight, council later approved the vehicles for both fiscal years, and the replacement vehicles for the 2017-18 fiscal year have been purchased, tonight's resolution proposal is for council to approve the purchasing of fiscal year 2018-2019 vehicles. To date, the city maintains 145 vehicles and other equipment in an ongoing effort to meet service level expectations, in past years, due to challenged budgets, the city employed a practice of replacing only marked police vehicles and other vehicles which may have experienced major failure, our current process for establishing replacement lists starts with staff first meeting with the garage mechanics and city departments to carefully analyze and review the replacement recommendation schedule, as well of the, as well as the maintenance and repair history, the vehicle replacement list is then presented to the council in the annual budget, in effort to explain this, how city vehicles are used, city vehicles are often driven or operated in a different manner than normal vehicles, they experience heavy use, start and stop all day long under demanding conditions, and are subject mostly to city driving, the city is approximately 5.5 square miles, and city vehicles do not frequently reach high mileage over their useful life, however, these idle hours, excuse me, however, these idle hours of use contribute to a total negative wear and tear effect on the vehicle's lifespan, which is not represented in the overall mileage of the vehicle, vehicles usually don't have a specific backup if they are taken out of service or suffer a major breakdown, they have a, they have specialized equipment, radios, toolboxes, lights, and pressurized equipment, when this happens, it has a deferred effect on the task for which the vehicle is intended, due to the older age of some of the vehicles, we are experiencing more serious issues such as difficulty meeting smog requirements and getting replacement parts. To procure these vehicles, staff is using a government purchasing cooperative agreement and competitive bid process, both methods of procurement are in compliance with the state contract code and the city's purchasing regulations, for an example of government purchasing through a cooperative agreement, one street sweeper will be selected through the Houston-Gallison Area Council, HGAC, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, GCS Environmental Equipment Services Incorporated of Woodland, California, will provide the large sweeper unit, this vendor was selected based on availability, price, and ability to provide all specifications, having satisfactorily provided similar vehicles to municipalities across the country and in California, for the remaining five vehicles, city staff in compliance with state contract code and the city's local purchasing regulations issued a notice to bidders to automobile dealerships and posted the notice on the city's website, the city received only one bid from Ceramone Ford of Colma, California. The cost to replace the proposed six vehicles is $529,040, which includes all costs of the equipment, outfitting, sales tax, license, registration, and delivery, the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for these six vehicles is $509,000, staff is requesting to appropriate available funds in the general equipment revolving fund in the amount of $20,040 for the cost difference in revised vehicle purchase price from the original budgeted amount. For alternatives, the council cannot award the replacement contracts and direct staff to schedule any necessary repairs and continue ongoing maintenance, or delay the acquisition of one or more of these vehicles to a future year, however, it is staff's recommendation to purchase the replacement vehicles that were approved as part of the 2018-2019 budget. In closing, I want to reassure the council tonight that staff works very hard not only to provide a sustainable fleet, but take very seriously our role and responsibility as good stewards of ratepayer and citizen dollars, we work with the accounting staff, the city manager's office, and various departments to analyze very closely each vehicle, its unique role in the operation and delivery of services, and make adjustments to ensure that when we do recommend the replacement of a vehicle, it's done so in a thoughtful and reasonable manner. This concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Questions of council, council for staff?
Through the chair, Councilmember Medina and I were part of the subcommittee last year, and we appreciated staff's time, and it was definitely a helpful process, so, thank you for your presentation tonight as well.
You're welcome. Through the chair, just as a reminder, since, I mean, it has been a while since we visited this, this topic, but what were some of the questions that the subcommittee had regarding the justification for the vehicles, if you remember?
If, if remember, well, I know one of the concerns was that the replacement of these vehicles, and some of them didn't have actually a lifespan about, with them as well, and so there was actually more detail that we were able to get in the subcommittee meeting to understand, you know, and I think like, like Dennis said in the presentation as well, is that this is not a typical vehicle, right? You might drive a vehicle for 120,000 miles, 150, but these are the starts and stops, and vehicles are running all day long, you drive it five miles and it's, it's got the engine running all day long, and so it's got a lot different use, and we sort of got a lot of that, more details as well, I don't know, anything else?
Anything else you want to add to that, as far as the subcommittee, or Marty?
Go ahead. For the, I'm okay with approving these, my, my question is, are we ever going to look at hybrids or electric vehicles?
The hybrids and electric vehicles actually are more money than the vehicles, they, they charge more for them, your typical, like, the vehicles you see at City Hall, the Escapes, they are, we're getting them for about $23,000, the hybrids are running anywhere between 25 to 27, so they're, they're charging more for them.
Right, but they're better for the environment and less maintenance, I mean, there's, there's a reason why electric cars are kind of picking up, and there's a lot of rebates, and, just curious, at some point, looking into electric cars is, other cities are doing it, county's doing it, maybe, just thought I'd ask that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
City manager? Through the chair, we'll be sure to add that to the fleet study, use of alternative fuel, fuel vehicles.
Got it, just for this parking enforcement vehicle, if you could remind us why, where are we at with that, and when is that, is that going to be in this next budget, or?
Parking enforcement vehicles.
Number seven.
Yeah, so, number seven is a go-forward, the small vehicles.
Right.
So, we do have a current challenge right now with our go-forward parking enforcement vehicles, we had two within the last month, both were involved in serious vehicle accidents that have rendered them not unusable, and so we are currently investigating options to borrow one from another agency, in the meantime, we have adjusted our parking enforcement methods to accommodate for not having those two vehicles available, what we would like to move to is a different type of vehicle and a different enforcement policy, as you, or posture, as you know, there are recent decisions that are calling into question some methods that involve chalking tires, and so we're looking into that, we have not, and most cities have not changed their, their methodology yet, but we want to, the go-forward vehicles have a door on the, I believe it's the, the, the left side, so you can, the right side, so you can chalk the tires, and so if we are no longer chalking tires, then we are using other enforcement mechanisms, that's going to affect the type of vehicles we purchase, and so we're just taking a little time to figure out what type of vehicle we'll need going forward before replacing what we had, just because it was involved in an accident.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Michael?
Through the chair, thank you, just because we're reviewing the municipal code, and there was a section in there about how we dispose of surplus property or city-owned property, I'm wondering, these vehicles get sold at auction somewhere, and do we anywhere account for their, any residual value that might be in them? account for their, any residual value that might be in them? And then does that money go back into the same reserve pool, or how do we handle that?
Yes, when we do sell our surplus vehicles, the money does go back into the, either, it could be the home fund, so if it was a general fund vehicle, the general fund; if it was a sewer fund vehicle, the sewer fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other question, comment, actions from council? It's a resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Bosch.
Thank you.
Item B.
Items 7B and C, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to remaining portions of San Bruno Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, as part of a comprehensive municipal code update, and adopt three resolutions. One, electing to become subject to the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Two, approving a master mutual aid agreement. And three, adopting the Cal OES rules and regulations relative to workers' compensation benefits for disaster service volunteers. Also, as 7C, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance, as part of a comprehensive municipal
That's it, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. If it's okay with you, we'll take both of these items in sequence because they're both relating to the same thing, which is to revise the remainder of Title II and Title III of the municipal code. Our agenda for tonight is just a brief review of the background. We're going to discuss introducing the ordinance, amending the remainder of Title II, and I apologize, I forgot to also include on my first slide here the three resolutions that are part of that, so we'll remind you to do that, and then introduce a new ordinance amending Title III, and then talk briefly about next steps. So, these are the same slides as you saw last time. I won't spend a lot of time on them. We've been going through the process of revising the municipal code since last October, and if the city council approves the introduction of the ordinances tonight, we will have gone through the first three chapters of the code. So we're making good progress. So, at the last meeting, the city council discussed and provided direction for the remainder of Title II, which is Administration and Personnel, and also Title III. So, again, you saw this slide also at the last meeting, and we've listed for you the changes that are made in the code. There were no changes except for one, which I'm going to talk about in just a minute, that were made to any of the sections of the code that we discussed last time. And by the way, would like to ask you to ignore the ardent yellow highlights that appear in a couple of places in the code. Somehow, we weren't able to get rid of those artifacts. I'm not sure why. But, the one thing I do want to bring your attention to is something that I discovered after our meeting last night, which is a potential problem with Section 2.12.040. And it is currently written, it says that the city council shall, by resolution, approve a list of qualified persons in order of succession who would perform the city manager's duty in the event of absence or disability or in case of a vacancy. And the problem that I identified with that language is it's so broad that it could conceivably apply to situations where the city manager is on a one-day vacation. So, what we wanted to do is, and my recommendation, is that we change the shall adopt a resolution to may adopt a resolution, which allows you to do it in the circumstances where it makes sense to do that. But then also, we added a sentence that said, whenever the city manager is referred to in the code, it shall include any person designated by the city manager to perform such duties as are delegated to the designee. And the short interpretation of that is, when the city manager is away, he or she can delegate to somebody else the duties in the code. And that's actually quite important in situations where there are duties that are being performed by designees of the city manager, and not just for city manager functions, but there are a great many things in the code that say the city manager is empowered to do this, this, that, and the other thing. And so oftentimes, those duties are already delegated to other individuals. And if there's ever a court proceeding or an action in which we have to prove that that designee has the authority to do that, it's actually very difficult to do that. You know, what are we going to point to? So, here, what we're going to be able to point to is that we have an ordinance that says the city manager can make those delegations. So, I think that's an important thing to have in the code. You'll also see this coming up in another section of the code we're going to get to next year, which is in Section 7, having to do with the duties of the city engineer and the city traffic engineer, where we're going to tighten up some of those definitions and make sure that those positions or designees are able to make those sorts of decisions about traffic engineering that we can then use looking ahead in court proceedings. So, that was really the genesis of this change.
Through the chair, I mean, through the chair. Mark, may I speak?
Of course.
Flashback. Just so I'm clear, so really, what it does is it clearly defines, the city manager must have been listening to me one day. So, it just takes the word out, shall to may. So, the city council still may ask for section planning. So, for example, whether it's assistant city manager, whether it's department head, one, two, three, four, five, that still gives us that ability, right, to ask the city manager for that to be given to us, correct?
Absolutely. Doesn't have, you don't have to ask the city manager for it to be given to you. You have that authority.
Right. That's what I'm just clarifying, that may and shall, but anyway. So, the city council still has that ability?
That's correct.
For current or future managers?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. So, quickly, moving ahead to the remainder of Title II, we didn't have any other changes. Remember here, the main issue is streamlining of our purchasing ordinance and adoption of the uniform cost accounting system, which will help city staff be much more efficient and time-sensitive with respect to projects that are under about $200,000. So, we're going to make all of those changes, and then there's a resolution that you have to adopt about that as well. And then, the last thing to highlight in the emergency preparedness ordinance is that, as we talked about last time, that requires compliance with the state ordinance. And we did go ahead and send this ordinance to the state for their approval. They haven't responded yet. And so what we're planning to do, we hope it's going to come soon. I've now established a number of contacts at state OES and also FEMA, having been a speaker at a conference, actually just yesterday, on disaster preparedness and planning in Sacramento. So, I think we will hopefully get this approved in the near future, but I won't bring it back for adoption until it is approved, just so you're not approving something that the state hasn't formally done. So then, moving to Title III, there were no changes from our discussion last time to this title. Remember, this is the one in which you can't do anything that increases the tax that anybody pays without a vote of the people, but instead, what we did is pave the way for the city council to adopt a regulatory ordinance regarding rental agent. And so then, when the community development department and staff comes back with a regulatory ordinance for the homestay, Airbnbs, and so on, we can require that the, either the hosts and/or those platforms pay the TOT, and so collect that revenue. That'll be coming back at some point next year. So, there are no other changes to that, and so the next steps would be simply to not only introduce the ordinance Title II, introduce Title III. We have three resolutions, each of which require a separate motion, and those resolutions are, number one, for the emergen, not in any particular order, but for the emergency preparedness. Number two, to make sure that the volunteers are covered by workers' compensation. And number three, to enroll the city in the Uniform Cost Construction Accounting Act. So, we'll bring those back for adoption, as I say, once the state approves it. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Just for clarification, so we do need to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, and then also the three resolutions?
That is for item, that is for item 7B, yes.
All right. Do I have any action or questions for Mr. Zaffroni?
Through the chair?
Michael.
So, one question I had was regarding the registering of disaster service workers, and I was just curious what the city is currently doing regarding that. And it looks like that's something that's being addressed, but I was just curious what we're currently doing and what we might do differently because of this.
Sure. So, a lot of that work happens through our emergency preparedness committee. So, I'll ask the fire chief to come up.
Good evening, Ian. So, currently, our SERF program is, as we talked about, is an educational thing. We try to train as many residents, and we don't have a SERF program that has a SERF team. That would require probably some additional staff, or at least staff time to do that. Some other cities do. What this does, though, however, will allow us to do, in event of a disaster, will allow us to, those spontaneous volunteers to process them and register them as disaster service workers for that particular event.
And currently, all city employees are designated as disaster service workers currently?
I believe it's all full-time employees, not part-time employees. Correct.
And in terms of registering those employees, is there any, is there like a database or a call list or something that would say, here are all the people that are potentially available to serve in a disaster?
Internally, we do. So, we train every, there's a process to go through that process. There's some training, ICS training that all staff does upon hiring. And they're, we have a whole program to explain what disaster service worker is, what their roles could be, how their hours could change, how their duties could change. So, all employees have that. HR handles that process with our guidance.
Okay. All right. That was it. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, if I may indulge the city council just for one more minute. I think it's important for you and also the public to know that the conference that I attended yesterday was the first conference in which both city attorneys and county council attended, and it was all about disaster preparedness and how to respond to a disaster. And I and other members of county councils' offices across the state, as well as other cities, put together and developed three binders full of documents that are all of the documents that any city or county could ever want with respect to any type of disaster or emergency. And those binders are now, and those materials will be available and are available online, not only for anybody's use throughout the state, but also, of course, the city's use. And I'll be meeting with, I just talked to the fire chief earlier today, meeting with him and other members of staff to make sure that the city not only is able to use all of those documents, but has done all of the things that were recommended at the conference to do for emergency preparedness. It was really, frankly, a remarkable thing. It was the first one I'd been to, and I just wanted to pass along that there is a great deal of advanced planning that went into it, and hopefully, we'll be able to see the benefits of that if there ever is another emergency. But it did point out how many cities and counties have had emergencies of various kinds, both human-made and otherwise, and how important it is to have the upfront disaster planning. So, that'll be one of the things that I just decided I needed to take on to make sure that the city is as prepared as possible, both from a legal standpoint and also as well from an operational standpoint.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions?
I do have some more. So, actually, just one more question. So, I noticed in the taxing section of this, there's still some references to things that are, in some cases, specific, and in some cases, very archaic. And I'm just wondering, do we need to keep those in there? I mean, there was references to stamp redemption stores and shuffleboard, how we tax shuffleboard courts. And so, I'm wondering, none of those things exist? Bowling alleys, we don't, bowling alley, maybe somebody would open a bowling alley, but do we need to be that specific in how we address those things? And does it make sense to keep some of those? I don't think shuffleboard's ever going to be like a thing, but I don't know.
Well, like you, councilmember Salazar, I thought for sure the answer to that question was going to be no, we don't need to keep any of those things. And then, I made the mistake of contacting our outside tax counsel that we use for a number of things. And his caution was, you know, if it isn't broken, don't fix it, because in the tax section, you don't want to do anything that might have the even inadvertent result of increasing a tax that somebody else pays. So, his advice was, keep it in there even if it's archaic. It doesn't matter. It's not hurting anybody. And that goes against sort of every updating instinct that I had certainly, and that you and others may have. But that was his advice. Keep it in unless it's creating a problem. And it's not creating a problem, so that's why we left it in.
Okay. I'll buy that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, this is in regards to 7B. We need to have a motion to waive the first reading?
Second.
There's been a motion made in second to waive the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have at 5-0. Now, we need to introduce the ordinance, please.
Introduce the ordinance, keeping the shuffleboard in. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Now, under the same, you want us to take the three various resolutions?
Yes, please.
Electing, so the first one is electing to become subject to the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Do we have anybody to introduce the resolution? Make a motion for the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next resolution is for approving a master mutual aid agreement.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Last one in this section, adopting the Cal OES rules and regulations relevant to workers' compensation benefits for disaster service volunteers.
And I'll introduce that resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Now, moving to 7C on Title III. So, we need to have a motion to waive the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. And then, introducing the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next, item D.
Thank you.
Item 7D, receive report and direct staff to cancel the August 13, 2019 regular city council meeting.
City manager?
Sure. Consistent with prior practice, we are putting an item before the city council to consider canceling your first regular meeting in August. That is the August 13 meeting. Should you decide to do that, the only meeting in August will be Tuesday, August 27. So, that is keeping with your prior practice, canceling the first meeting in August. What that will also mean is that after tonight's meeting, we will have our July meetings, July 9, July 23, and then take a break until August 27.
Anybody okay with that?
Yes. I'll move that we cancel the first meeting in August.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Okay. Now, we'll move on to comments from councilmembers.
Marty?
Yes, sir. It's that time of month, the American Legion Breakfast downtown San Bruno. It's a great event. There will be two people making omelets for you, and I'll be one of them, if you're lucky, or maybe you'll have the other person. Starts at 8:30 to 11. It's great. It's for the American Legion, and they provide funding for our veterans. And I also wanted to congratulate the San Bruno Prospects Academy Basketball Team. This young ladies' team won a basketball tournament in Waikiki, Hawaii, just this past weekend, and they all go to cap, and they're a very special team because they were undefeated at Parkside for three years. So, we're expecting really, really big things from them. So, those are my congratulations and comments.
Okay. With that said, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the closed session. And it was in regards to public employee performance evaluations pursuant to government code Sections 54957 for the city attorney and city clerk. The next regular city council meeting will be held on July 9, right here, at 7:00.
o'clock at the San Bruno Senior Center, meeting adjourned.